At 7:00.
The City Marine City Commission Meeting is called to order on Thursday, November 4, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Can we please have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Mayor Verkaman.
Here.
City Manager Chapman.
Here.
And can I have a motion to approve the agenda? We have an addition. We're going to be looking at 7L like Lincoln, the Marine City Holly Jolly Santa Parade.
I make a motion to approve the consent Agenda A through K with the addition of L as presented, please.
Support.
This is going to be approving the agenda.
The whole agenda.
The whole agenda.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Any discussion on anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on to public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name. Limit your comments to five minutes. Commission will not respond, but we will follow up as necessary.
I live at 160 South Mary Street. Been in the city for about over a year. Want to thank everybody for efforts. I know it's been some trying times lately, but, you know, let's move forward as we go in the city and, you know, let's learn from the past. Today's the first day of the rest of our lives, so, you know, if we can't fix what happened in the past, but we can move forward. So I'll stress that first. The, just a couple of things. You know, I have notes I took down, but I'm just going to kind of go freestyle right now. Just a couple of things, I have a couple of questions on or questions, and obviously you can't answer right now, and I get that, but maybe you can during your commission moment, is, one is about the Guy Center. There's different rumors floating around town, what's being sold, what's not being sold. I've expressed before, I think it's a good idea to sell the building, get it back on the tax rolls. The city is, has a limited amount of revenue, you know, it's very dependent, you know, we have a resident tax base. We're fortunate that we have a nice downtown district, much better than a lot of communities have, and it helps support our tax base. So let's not take our businesses ever for granted, because, you know, it could be a lot worse. We have some big projects going on in the town right now, it looks like. And from what I understand, it was never a special assessment district ever set up to help fund those projects, so we're fortunate as a town. But with the Guy Center, some of the rumors I'm hearing is that they want to sell the building, which I'm fine, get it back on the tax rolls, but, you know, I'm hearing they're selling 20 feet of the property, 50 feet of the property, going to the water's edge. It would help to, you know, bring some transparency and maybe quell down the rumors out there, because you know how one thing starts, right? It could be five feet, by the time 10 people hear it, we're up to 100 feet of property being sold, right? So it may just be help in this kind of format to quell that per se, or just, you know, what might be discussion. Obviously, if you're in contract negotiations, you can't go too much in depth with anybody. But that was one of my questions and concerns. You know, we have a new city manager. You know, she runs the day-to-day operations of the city. We have, obviously, the City Commission that provides the overstaff, and from what I understand, she's stretched pretty thin, so, you know, I'm sure she needs the support, and the city staff needs the support of everybody during this transition in her role, as well as, you know, I heard some comments, one of the commission meetings a long ago, that, you know, they're trying to sort out through some finances, you know, obviously, you know, so not to bog down in that, that is worked through and where we're at on the finances and, you know, clearing that up. It's partly on the city staff's fault, but it's also on the city commission's fault, as well as providing that oversight. So not blaming anybody, but right now, let's move forward and try to clear up that mess of what's going on, you know, some of the stuff I saw on the videos and stuff like that of the commission meetings. The last thing I have is, you know, there was a lot of discussion around the meeting minutes, and I know that's on the agenda for later on. My, from my experience and my opinion, I, so is not to create controversy down the road, you know, how the minutes are tailored. I prefer, as a resident, that they're as obtuse as possible and not full of a lot of verbatim comments or partial sentences, because then it could be like a narrative being creative. Just keeping as obtuse as possible, how they voted, what motions were made, you know, any amendments made, you know, how the votes were cast, just doesn't need to be a whole tell the whole story, you know. It's very hard, I'm sure, in the city clerk to do that, who I believe is retiring within a year, right?
Pardon me?
You'll be retiring very shortly, so, again, that's more strain on our city staff trying to find another replacement, you know, so, keep them skinny, obtuse, doesn't need to tell the story, you know. If people want to watch the whole video, they can. And, again, I thank everybody for efforts, you know. I, I'm glad everybody's starting to tone down the rhetoric. I would just, you know, I'm big on maintaining the decorum in the meetings, and I hope that we do that going forward. And, you know, everybody is here to do the right for the city, and I know that. So I thank everybody for your efforts. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Go ahead.
I was not planning on coming back to another meeting, but I made the mistake of watching the remainder of the last meeting, if you want to call it that. It was more like a kangaroo court mixed with Jerry Springer and a really sad clown show. I've been to a lot of city township, school board, county, and political meetings, and I've never seen a shit show quite like last Monday. First, before I tear into the sad excuse of a mayor, I want to thank Commissioners Brian Ross, Bill Clausen, and Mrs. Callahan for seeing through the lies and deception of this mayor and the city attorney. I agree with Commissioner Ross on the need to tone down the rhetoric, on one hand, but I think that goes for both sides. The mayor's been dragging Lisa's name in the mud and attempting to destroy her reputation. She also tried to remove a duly-elected leader from office and used taxpayer money to do it. We have more than enough right to protest her business and boycott it. As a veteran of our armed forces, I'm a big believer and supporter of free speech, even for those I don't agree with. I have something here, the Constitution, and of the state and of the United States, that pesky thing you all swore oath to uphold, and we have a right to the First Amendment. The mayor flat-out lied toward the end of the last meeting, and you're lucky I left already, because I would have called you out on it. The mayor claims that protesters were at her business and blocking the driveway. That's a flat-out lie. We went out of our way to not block anyone from entering her business. We were peaceful and welcoming to everyone. I even offered pizza to some of your drunken supporters outside the bar. It was your side that was attempting to threaten, intimidate, and shut down and remove people. The police were present the entire time, and it went off without incident. We had video going the entire time, and I'm willing to bet you $1,000 right now.
Get away from me. Get away from me.
Let the record show, the mayor did not shake on it, because she knows she's full of it. She lied about this, and what else is she lying about? When does it end? At what point will this mayor be held accountable? You drug Lisa through a clown show on Monday, and her attorney ripped this mayor and the city attorney to shreds. It was like watching a lion eat a gazelle. I almost felt sorry for you guys, but if you weren't so corrupt. Lisa and her attorney carried themselves with grace and professionalism in the face of lies and deception. I also noticed the multiple faces that the city manager and city clerk were making during this debacle. It was unprofessional. You were supposed to be neutral parties and representatives of this city, both of which you failed miserably. That being said, this evening, I'm submitting a Freedom of Information Act request for the following information. I'm going to be quick, because I'm short on time. I'm requesting access to emails to and from the mayor for the last year with regard to city business, and yes, that includes any of your person, any in your personal email as well. I'm requesting how much time it took the city clerk to concoct that letter that she served commissioners with for the last meeting. I'm requesting how much time was spent by city employees, including but not limited to the city clerk, attorney, and manager to prepare for that meeting, and any added costs for Channel 6 to record it. I'm requesting a copy of camera footage in the city hall on the days leading up to the Monday meeting, and how much time the mayor spent in the office with city staff, including but not limited to the city clerk, attorney, and manager, or others preparing for the Monday meeting. I'd also like to request police radio traffic for the time of the Saturday protest, and whether the mayor had given directives to the police department to guard her business that day. This should be a good start, and maybe will pave the way for commissioners to remove the mayor for arbitrarily using city employees for her own political purpose without knowledge or consent of the commission and blatant violation of the city charter. You're guilty of the very thing that you accused Lisa of doing. Mayor Verkaman Cannon, however the hell you say it, do the right thing, do the city a favor, resign. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Bill Hoss, 203 Pleasant Street. Well, Alan took care of most of it, and I'm here to say, a perfect storm is formed. I'm dealing again with illegal rental, wood burner in the house, a chimney that isn't decoded, and garbage that's been around. I've been complaining since Ray Skatargic, or however you want to say. You've got two terms. We've had Bannenbach and Reyes. That's four deals. We've been dealing with the same property, and we haven't had, you know, no fine, no fines to this woman. What's the problem here? You ain't got no money? You ain't got nothing? But we don't find nobody. Maybe I just put a big billboard on, and then when somebody sends me a letter, I'll put it on my trailer, take it downtown for two weeks, and then bring it back to my house like they do with their illegal rental problem. All right. I wasn't real thrilled with the business pals trying to oust Lisa and Jim Hassett, longtime residents. You know, I'm not too big a fan. I've told many times before, I don't have friends. My friends are common, and my friends are sins. I'm here to remind all our elected officials that you do have rules and regulations you have to go by. Misconduct in office by elected official is a felony offense, punishable felony offense. Alan pretty much, well, he didn't cover the Bill Clausen asking before they hired the new city manager. They was told everything was good, but you did it anyways. Then you had the letter that his attorney said to pass it out, but nobody passed it out, because the mayor herself says no merit. And I also find it funny, you know, because I pretty much laid low, I haven't done a whole lot of Facebook action, Phil's taken that, Mike's got that, the people send me stuff. People send, and what they sent me needs to go to the proper authorities, because when I've read it twice, three times, if somebody's making it up, boy, they're right on track. So with that being said, I told the proper authorities that they have, see if it's a Marine City whistleblower, if it's somebody from Lexington, if it's somebody stirring the pot to prosecute them to full extent of the law for the aggravation. But it's something, they have all the high-tech computer gurus to find out who this is and where it's coming from. And Alan covered that. The police were sitting, the only person who blocked traffic was a truck, and that was Tom Burton speaking to that truck. Where I was talking to the old Mayor Bukowski across the street, and I yelled, "Hey, get the truck moving before they have a problem with us." And then when the truck moved, it's like, well, that ain't even our people. So like I said, you know, it's, like I say, it's real funny that people send me stuff, and I'm not even the guy on Facebook with all the action. I mean, they probably remember me, because I'm not afraid to go to the authorities. FBI last time, Lepley's, we've been having problems since way back, since the Lepley's started about 2005, when money was transferred out of Tiffa's. You know, people allowed to have business signs in front of their house and not pay. The blind mayor, Skatargic, finally got a new set of glasses, told his neighbor, "Get your sign out of there." Which me, I didn't, you know, if you want your sign up, pay the money. Are you too cheap to pay the money? But anyways, the main thing is misconduct in office. Telling you, don't look good. And I don't know why people are sending me stuff.
Anyone else? Go ahead. No. Her. Go ahead.
Heather Warner, 345 North Elizabeth. Just kind of going off some notes I jotted down before I came tonight. I'd like to thank Wendy, Bill, and Brian for doing the right thing at our meeting on Monday. There's a couple of things I don't understand, and maybe one of these days I'll figure it out. In the agenda packet this week, there's a letter dated October 25th. I'm not going to name any names, that was wrote to the city manager about a great person that Cheryl Armerez, and I don't understand why the letter was wrote, because Cheryl wasn't on trial, so I don't know why it's in the agenda packet and what effect it has to do with the meeting tonight. The same person in question, you know, I wasn't at the protest, I've got a lot of things going on, but I did drive by when I ran home to take care of my animals real quick, and everybody was walking the streets, nobody was, they were doing their little circle, they weren't bothering anybody. But, you know, we had one person that, you know, tried to start, you know, stuff with the peaceful protesters, started harassing, and I commend you, Mike. You handled that with, you handled that very well, better than anybody that I could, I could not have handled it the way that you handled it. Also, during the meeting on Monday, we were told not to discuss the investigation. Anybody that spoke on Lisa's behalf, nobody brought up the investigation, but then we get that one person that gets up and throws names out there indirectly. We all know it had to do with the investigation, but we let that go, because depends on what side of the fence you're on around here, apparently. There was also talking during that meeting back and forth between Chris and Holly, nothing, sorry, Chris. Nothing was ever said to them about it, but I know people that were in the audience kept getting gabbled. You know, and I know our downtown business, there's a lot of good things that have been done there. Downtown businesses are doing great. But at what point do we start looking at the residents and what the residents need? I need streets. You know, I get to the point, you know, where now my Cadillac needs shocks, because we have these streets. My parents, I had to get them back here from Florida, because somebody has to be around to take care of them. And, you know, we went looking at houses in Marine City, and she says, "What's wrong with your streets? Can you call somebody?" And I, and I said, I laughed. I said, "We've been dealing with this for years." I said, "No," I said, "we're worried about downtown. I mean, there's got to be some type of grants for the streets and to help the residents out to get people to move here." You know, we found them a nice house in Algonet, great street. You know, and my husband asked me not to say this, but I'm going to do it anyways. But, you know, Mayor Verkaman, you come across as a very mean person, like a bully. You're just very mean. I watch you, you know, you cut off, you know, Bill tries to talk sometimes, you just cut him off in the middle of a sentence. You know, and I know I'm not everybody's friend, but at least you could, like, pretend like you like people, even if you don't like them. Like, you know, like Chris, I know I've caused Chris undue stress in her job six years ago during the PA 33, but she's still my Facebook friend, and she says hi to me every time. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Phil Paluckshak, 546 Chertier. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I said I'm going to come up here just to reiterate what Alan Ritchie and some others have talked about already. On the protests, being I wasn't the one that organized it, I feel I should speak on this, it was peaceful. It was stressed to be peaceful. People showed up, they protested, they exercised their First Amendment rights under the Constitution, and they did it peacefully. The Marine City Police Department was positioned, they were watching it, I could see them the whole time, and I can guarantee you, had we been blocking traffic, they would have come down, they would have warned us not to block traffic. The mayor most likely would have been calling the Marine City Police Department to say, "Hey, they're blocking traffic into my business." The mayor saying at the last meeting we had that traffic was blocked to our business is a flat-out lie. We are peaceful, we did not block traffic to your business, your parking lot was full, we did not harass any of your customers, we left your customers alone, and we continued our peaceful march and our peaceful protest and supported Commissioner Hendrick. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Try to keep this quick. Just wanted to thank Bill and Mr. Ross and Ms. Callahan. It was awesome to actually have our voice heard for once. And I'll be honest, once I got to Mr. Ross, I was pretty sure that he was going to vote yes, and I was pretty sure that chaos was going to ensue. But he made the right decision and saved the day. I'm pretty glad he didn't call my bluff about picketing people's houses, because I'm not going to do that. That is a little bit across the line there. Businesses, that's fair game, but houses, yeah, it's a little bit over the line, I agree. Now, as far as the mayor and the other two that chose to vote yes on this, you would not believe the number of people reaching out just begging for a recall, just begging to get you off that seat. People really don't like you. They really don't. But to do a recall, it just doesn't make sense, because the only person we can recall is you. If we take you out of there, we still got the majority of the board that hasn't really been looking out for most of the people in this town. So we would have to flip two seats, and Mr. Bryson and Mr. Kreidler over there can't be recalled, because they're in their last year of their term. So it's pretty unfortunate, but it is what it is. I just hope we can move forward from here and not continue to embarrass ourselves, because that was embarrassing. The whole thing was goddamn embarrassing, and we just can't have that kind of stuff anymore. You guys don't have to like each other, you really don't. You don't have to really get along. All you got to do is do your job, just evaluate situations, be responsible, weigh each side of the issue, and come up with the best fair solution. Not a perfect solution, but a fair one. Thanks.
Anyone else?
My name's Andrew Pacleodinez. I live on West Boulevard. Before I start, I'd like to make it known that I moved to town about a year ago. I really like this city, can't wait to start a family here. I've watched every commission meeting since I moved, and I feel like I need to say a couple of things based on what I've been seeing. I'd also like it known, just for the record, that I'm not friends with or affiliated with any of the commissioners, nor have I ever spoken to any of you before. Trying to offer opinions that are shifted as little by bias as I can manage, although I'm not perfect in that regard. I'm here to speak on a couple topics, but first, I'd like to address my disappointment in the public's handling of the Lisa Hendrick removal special meeting on November 1st. There was and is a lot of talk about boycotting businesses, picketing homes, based on the political positions held by certain commissioners. I think this is absolutely unacceptable for the circumstances at hand. These issues need to be handled democratically, not by attempts to bully commissioners you disagree with. We have a small town with few businesses, and we don't need to scare them or any new businesses away with overzealous behavior or baseless corruption conspiracies. People shouldn't fear for their livelihoods based on their political positions. We should all keep in mind that our commissioners are not career politicians who make their life, who make their living by staying at office. They are normal citizens who are willing to donate their time and service to the city. If you feel the need to exercise your right to protest, I think you should do it at a public office or park. If you disagree with the positions taken by the commissioners, then your duty is to vote them out at the next election. Furthermore, unless a commissioner commits a crime or violates the charter, a recall would be pretty uncalled for. Officials shouldn't face punishment during their elected term merely because people don't like their opinions. That's not how the democratic process works. To this end, I'd like to add that whether or not you agree with the decision, the mayor was within her legal rights and duties to call a hearing. Furthermore, it's her public duty to call a hearing when these issues come up, specifically for the purpose of finding the truth. To protest the act of holding such a meeting demonstrates a lack of understanding of proper political process. How is the commission or the citizenry supposed to be aware of the truth without having a formal hearing to bring the truth to light? Without balanced testimony, we're all relying on assumptions, bias, and hearsay, which seems to be how we got to this point in the first place. I'd add, I'd like to add for the record, that although I often disagree with Lisa Hendrick on issues, and I think it's possible that she should have handled the personnel issue differently, I would not have supported action to oust her. Additionally, although I often support the mayor's decisions and generally agree with her, I think that this issue would have been better handled at a special meeting without the threat of removal from the commission. Now, I'd like to address a couple points from the public, public comment at the November 1st meeting that were reported in the newspapers. One citizen stated that commissioners don't need to work as a team, because, quote, "This is not Marine City football." I think the commission does need to work as a team. It's essential for the function of our city government that all commissioners and employees are playing on the same team, which should be the people's team. This is not to say that every commissioner must agree on every issue, but they all must agree that they're voting in the direction that each commissioner individually thinks would be the best to serve the city and its citizens, and then work together as a team to achieve those goals. Somebody else brought up the old saying, "Sticks and stones may break my bones, but words should never hurt me." As important, as important as it is to not react over-emotionally to harsh words, warranted or unwarranted, it is equally important to maintain respectful attitude towards your peers on the commission. No business conducted by the city or any other body should ever devolve into playground insults, like we've seen here on both sides, and I think sincere apologies are due all around. If our commissioners will not commit to getting along, and I mean all of them, then we will never escape this current drama. We all need to get over it and put this behind us. I'd like to mention, many citizens get their news from unofficial Facebook groups. I urge that anyone who has interest in city politics should watch the entire commission meetings and draw their own conclusions. If you get your information from these, if you get your information and opinions from these Facebook groups, you are likely receiving incomplete and biased accounts of what actually happened. If the citizens are unwilling to put forth, put forth the time to understand the full context of the meetings, then they should also think twice before taking strong stances on city politics, especially doing so publicly. It's our duty as the citizenry not only to participate in our local government, but to fully understand the issues at hand as they, as they pertain to the individual citizen. Do your own research, fight your own bias, and draw your own conclusions. On a side note, we discussed a lot of semantics. Not a problem.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Democracy is messy, isn't it? Monday, we had a hearing. In these chambers, there was some good, some bad, and actually, something beautiful. The good was that people on both sides of an issue saw something they thought was wrong and said something. That was a good thing. The good was that both sides came together, they discussed the issues in a democratic way, and came to a resolution. Now, was everybody happy with that resolution? Probably not. But that's democracy for you. Though the outcome will no doubt be debated for some time, the clear winner here was Marine City. There were protests, and that was good. But some members of our community and others from outside took it upon themselves to threaten the members of this body the members of this body if they voted to remove Commissioner Hendrick. That was bad. Are those actions, are those threats actionable? I don't know, that's not for me to decide or to act upon. What I and some others I know object to is that these threats came from people who were standing under the banner of speaking on behalf of the people of Marine City. I am of that body, and I neither support nor condone those threats or those actions, and those people neither speak for or act on my behalf. If, as they claim, those threats come in support of Commissioner Hendricks, they represent less than one-third of the voters in Marine City. That would be 32% as of the last election. I know Lisa's the top vote-getter, but 68% of the voters in this town chose not to vote for, as was their right. So please, stop claiming that you represent people that you don't. I resent it. It was a long and contentious hearing, but in the end, something beautiful happened. My friend, Brian Ross, a man neither large in stature nor loud of voice, decided to cast his vote, neither to retain Commissioner Hendricks nor to remove her, but for Marine City. This humble patriot of our small town, and I hope I'm not embarrassing you, Brian, this humble patriot of our small town said enough and voted no to even the score in the debate and hopefully bring calm, civility, and sanity back to our community. I hope his clarity, forthrightness, and humility and the truth of his message had the same impact on the rest of our community that it did on me. It was a beautiful thing. Now, let's get back to whatever it is you people do.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Rudy Machaca, 315 Westminster, former member of the Five Minute Citizens. I think the first thing I want to do is thank those three commissioners, Mr. Ross, Wendy, and Bill Claussen, for what you did. I heard a lot of these comments, some I agree and some I don't disagree with. What was important to me, what I saw on Monday, and I was horrified. I've been hearing about you, Madam Mayor. I walk just about every day, and folks come up to me and they tell, in fact, the last couple of times I heard, we have seven commissioners and a mayor. Seven commissioners and a mayor? And they told me again. So then I started to look at the meetings, and lo and behold, they were right. You got an attorney on here that functions like a commissioner, overstepping his boundaries. When I sat on that commission, I don't ever recall Yakim doing what this gentleman does. He speaks for the city manager when he's not supposed to, that's not his job. He led some of the meeting on Monday, even redirected some of the people. That's not your job, sir. Oh, I know it gets tough on that side, because I've been on that side. In fact, we did something you don't do. And during the five minutes, we responded, because everybody here has one thing in common, they come here seeking relief. And you say, no, you got five minutes, maybe, maybe not. I might answer. Now, a lady stood up here and said something to you, and I'm not so sure you heard her, so I'm gonna say it for you. Because during the meeting, this is how I saw you. Because these is what you were presenting. You presented your case, but you weren't prepared. You were unable to substantiate even one allegation, not even one. You came across as arrogant, resistant, and unprofessional, just positioned at your home. I mean, there were some people who came up and said some things to me you wouldn't believe. And I'm cool, cool as a cucumber, because they don't mean it. They're frustrated, whatever. Extremely impulsive, unable to answer questions coherently, you were evasive and unable to focus, altogether poor presentation. Now, what I did see was an attorney sat out here and just destroyed this attorney. Destroyed him. Now, if he's the best that we have for our city, oh, no. Oh, no, and I'm, this is for the entire commission, this is something you need to think about. That attorney that came in, he was prepared. And when I sat on that side, I remember when St. Clair came, and I was ready for them. I don't even think he prepared you for what was about to take place. You were scrambling with your papers and everything, and at one point, you told him, oh, I'll give you the invoice, I'll, no, no, and you, sir, you know that the things that you said and did in there, you wouldn't have gotten away in accord of law. And you know that, and I know that. The city manager you have now, not impressed with her. She sat here at a meeting before, her subordinate sat here and said what she's gonna do and not gonna do, to a sitting commissioner, and she didn't say anything. It all had to do with taking notes, the minutes. I mean, if they come in, it takes you one second to make a change, it happens all the time, so, so what? Move on. Move on. Commissioner Bryson, I saw you, you saw things and you heard things, and yet, you made a motion to go ahead and, and, and remove her. Let me just say this, and I'll be done. I'm not, and God knows that Lisa and I have had a lot of disagreements, but on this one, she was right on. We gotta have to pull this together, folks, seriously.
Anyone else?
All right, I need, can I have a motion to approve the city commission meeting minutes of October 21st, 2021?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
Yes. Page four, I just had to, or, yes. Yeah, page four, minute-taking. It was discussed about looking into what High Tech might be able to do for storage for the recordings. That was the only thing I wanted to potentially add. And, that's it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now, the consent agenda. We have a lot of things on the consent agenda. The TIPA Board meeting minutes of November 17th, 2020, is that supposed to be 2021?
Nope, 2020.
Oh, okay. The TIPA Board meeting minutes of July 20th, 2021, historical commission minutes, January 19th, 2021, community and economic development minutes of September 22, 2021. We have a business license for Broken Anchor Tattoo, and that is going, just so the public knows, that's, it's on Broadway?
I believe, I thought it was down Riverside Plaza that it might be.
Isn't that where Rocky's pla, it's Rocky's old place?
Oh, okay, you're right, yeah, sorry.
All right, I just want to let everybody know. So, business license for Broken Anchor Tattoo, and then we have the business license for the Sweet Tooth Cafe, which is located behind the Sweet Tooth, it's now a cafe, you can get coffee there and whatever else. The special event, the MC The Newsboys Annual Paper Sale's coming up. We have another special event, the Mike Miller River Run is coming up, special event for the Friendsgiving Tyler Kreidler Memorial 5K and One Mile Run. We've got a communication that we need to file for, from Rosalie Squires, and then we have another communication for, from Laura Scashia, and then we have the thing that we added, which is the Marine City Hally Jolly Santa Parade. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, letters A through L. Support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And moving on to financial business, we have expenditures including payroll for $143,081.74. Can I have a motion to approve expenditures?
I make a motion to approve expenditures, including payroll for $143,081.74.
Not a lot of money.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Support.
Any questions? No, we need a second, sorry, you made a motion.
Sorry, I thought I heard support.
Okay. Motion and support. Any questions?
Who supported Bill?
Bill.
Okay, thanks.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Unfinished business, we were talking about minute-taking. This is just gonna be, obviously, a discussion tonight, but we did get some, we talked about at the last meeting, and, Bob, you want to talk about this? You had something.
At the, at the last meeting, we talked about this, and I was gonna search for ones that I drafted in the past, most of the ones that I drafted in the past have now converted to two sentences that rely on the OMA. So I took one that did survive from a couple of townships, and I put it into a draft for discussion this evening, and it just kind of lays out what are in those policies that survived. And I think you're, you were thinking of forming a committee, this, this could be the starting document for some review or some consideration.
So basically, what your recommendation is that we file the Open Meetings Act?
Well, that's, I told you I drafted policies in the past, and, you know, I went back to those communities, and most of them have switched to just complying with the Open Meetings Act. This draft that I put in front of you was one that had survived, that listed, yes, comply with the Open Meetings Act, but put these things in the minutes. And they created a list, which I didn't think was, you know, too, too bad of a list. And then there was a separate session, some separate information about how to maintain the closed session minutes. But this is just for discussion. Again, I recommend, you know, that you get a group together and try to bring something back to the commission as a whole that everybody can agree with.
Can you tell us what, what other municipalities have?
Well, I, I.
OMA minutes?
I looked at my Village of Oxford, I looked at Oxford Township, Westland, Dearborn, just a variety of different sizes of communities and different variations of communities, and a lot of them just have a paragraph that says, "Take minutes in accordance with the Open Meetings Act." So I also contacted the MML and tried to find various policies there, they didn't really have a lot to offer on this particular issue. The one that I dra, the one that I put in here for discussion is sort of a hodgepodge of what I saw in other policies that had remained. You know, the date of the meeting, the time, the members, the decisions, the roll call votes, people who came and left, and, and I think, you know, there's, as you go down the list, there's all motions made, important aspects of discussion, and the time the meeting was adjourned. That's the one I found that still had a list of things they wanted their minute-taker to put into the minutes.
Holly, what are your thoughts on this?
I'm in agreement. I think that this type of format is concise, it gives a little bit more than the basic Open Meetings Act, but it doesn't go into a perspective of the clerk by getting too much rhetoric. This is a safe amount, it gives more than the basic, but not too much. I also think, like we spoke at the other meetings, we're gonna upload the, the link to the, all of the YouTube videos, so if there's something somebody else isn't getting or they want more, they can watch the commission meetings. There is no reason to not ever have a commission meeting not taped. Whether it's a special or not, commission meetings should always be taped, so we will have a video link for that. After speaking with High Tech and Civic Plus, who created our website, the links are no issue whatsoever. They take less space to put a link on there than it does to put an agenda packet. What does eat up all your space would be like the recordings, if we were to upload the recordings, that's, yes, the voice recordings, thank you. So that, I would not recommend, will eat up our storage in no time, but the video links to commission meetings are no problem. Everybody else will rely on an agreed-upon policy for what the minutes should look like.
Is the city gonna keep a copy of each of these meeting minute, the videos? Because those links disappear after a while.
The, so when we talked with Dingeman, the way, everything he does is through YouTube, and basically, what he was told is that unless there's something, I don't remember what the wording was.
Violate the.
A violation or something that YouTube doesn't like, that's the only way they take it down. So that's where they go. We don't have the capabilities just to keep all this stuff, that's where it goes. So I think that's more than most communities do. By having that and this, I mean, we're, we're really kind of doing a double whammy to give people the extra that they want by having this on YouTube, by providing that through channel six.
The only, the only problem with this type of minutes is, again, long-term, you lose, you lose a lot of history, and if the videos do go away, you've lost it. And like I said, I've dealt with this on the Fire Authority, where the first year where that was created, that's what happened. Somebody followed this process, and when we all went to go back to look at how it was created, it's all gone. We have nothing, we have no documentation of discussions or anything, and that's the only thing that I don't, I don't agree with. I know you're doing the video, but if the video disappears down the road, you have nothing, and so all you have is a motion and.
Now, Lisa, on this one, you don't, the language just says important aspects of discussion, reflecting the key points, that's not enough, you don't think?
Well, I don't know. We haven't adopted this, so I don't.
No, I mean, it would, is that a concept that would be enough?
It'd have to be discussed, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I just don't want to lose everything, you know, because it's important down the road. I mean, you know, just in the fact of the pension meetings, we had to go back, and if we didn't have that, we wouldn't have that knowledge. So you have to be careful, is, is all I'm saying.
I'd like to add, too, I think a suggestion that we can work on, and it, it would go into the agendas for those meetings, is put documents together going into the meetings that are going to be discussed. So there is a paper trail that once it's with the agenda, it becomes part of the, the upload anyway, it's kept because it's part of the agenda packet. There, too, is another opportunity to include more information. There too is another opportunity to include more information. So if there's something that's super important that you want to have in it, create something and ask the clerk to put, put that in with the agenda. We'll make sure it's fitting for what's being, being done. But there's another way to include more information without having to bulk up the meeting minutes. And it's forever.
And, and bulking up the meeting minutes is time consuming. I mean, the clerk spends a lot of time, you know? And I'm looking at some of these cities that you said just go strictly by, oh, I'm at Dearborn. I mean, we're just a little Marine City.
I know. I, it was, you know, I tried to pick, I tried to canvas different types of communities, you know, big, large, small villages, cities.
Townships.
Townships. Um, this draft here is a hodgepodge between two townships. But it's just something to help you guys get started. It wasn't meant to be the end. It was just something because you guys wanted to get a discussion going.
Mm-hmm.
So parliamentary procedure wise, are we in discussion right now? Sorry, I just wanted to make sure. Um, a previous suggestion, suggestion that I had made too was that, you know, if you want a specific item indicated in the minutes, you say this commissioner would like indicated in the minutes. And, you know, concise arguments, not novels, but, you know, small bullet points that could be attributed to the minutes. And then as another point that was brought up previously, um, I did try a few of our commission meetings on YouTube with the closed caption thing, which is something that, uh, some of our citizenry had pointed out for our hearing impaired or, um, other people. And it worked impressively well. So, uh, that is something. Further to the, if it gets removed from YouTube or could get removed from YouTube, I guess the only other thing I'd like to find out is if we would be notified. If that, you know, if Paul Dingeman would be notified prior to them removing one of his videos.
So you could download them all.
Right, or, yeah.
I was reading through the terms for YouTube, trying to find out about retention. And I think I saw that you are notified.
You would be notified, okay. I just...
But that's usually they were referring to if there was something that was, didn't follow the guideline.
Sure.
That was allowable.
Sure.
They said you'd be notified.
Because I was looking at the numbers too of how many people, you know, look at the meetings, right, on YouTube. It's, it's 18, 20, 22. We're not talking thousands of people. We're not talking, you know, we have 4,258 citizens in Marine City and, you know. And you, and you don't know if they're residents or non-residents, you know, so...
Also true, yeah.
Yeah.
But again, just to the point of, you know, if the concern is retention, it sounds like we have that covered. And if the concern also is, uh, being ADA compliant, YouTube has that covered too. And again, I, I think just if we verify those things, then all of the points that people wanted to make are achieved and, and we can move on. Again, my, taking minutes for 22 years in industry, short and concise, gotta be. Nobody will read them otherwise.
Yep.
So that's my personal opinion. Um, do we need to make a motion? Make a motion to form the committee if there, if everybody thinks there should be a committee?
No, I don't think we need a committee.
Well, if, if, maybe if, um, you guys could send me something that helps me on, um, the second to the last bullet point. On the, it's a, it's two-sided, so it'd be on the backside of the first page. Important aspects.
Thanks.
Maybe you guys could send me your thoughts on that.
Yeah, that's a valid point because that could be taken very vaguely and argued about contentiously. So it's important aspects of discussion reflecting only the key points of the discussion and any action taken by the board.
Because I think that comment in particular is, is one of the things that brought us to this point.
Yes.
Yeah.
I kept it in there so that the committee, if there was going to be a committee, could, could vet that.
Right. Again, my proposal would be the commissioner, by virtue of their volition, says the key points that they would like addressed and those are specifically collected in the minutes at, at the commissioner's request. I, I think that that would...
And that would be during the meeting?
That's correct, yes. This would be at the end of the commissioner's, you know, at the end of discussion. That would be specifically.
Chris, you're the professional meeting minute taker.
Yeah, if that's out of order, you know.
It's whatever the board wants inside, as long as those are monstrous requests.
Like I said, no novels. It has to be concise, bullet pointed, and to the point.
I understand you.
I have a, a city that I work for. And when the council gives somebody, uh, the approval and they add bullet points to it that I have to follow, that I have to get the minutes to read them. Uh, they got to have brick stuff or they have to have certain stuff done. And I have to go back to the minutes for that.
Like on a planning commission?
No, this is, the, the commission has the approval. The planning commission approves it, then it goes to the city commission to approve it. And they add their bullet points or whatever they want to add to it. And then I get those minutes to say, they can't, I can't issue that permit until these bullet points are...
So Bill, would, would that, would that be usually embodied in a decision being made?
Yes.
So we, we will, I think under, everybody agrees that the full decision has to be embodied in the minutes. You know, what was the motion? What was, that, I, I don't think any of us are... But I understand what you're saying because then you have to go back and it says, well, you were supposed to do this to the lighting, this to the, to the landscape and this, right? That kind of thing?
Right, yeah. And then I have to have something to defend it if I go to court on it. It's like, that's the minutes that the council said do it this way.
So decisions made at the meeting, including, we'd have to say like, including all aspects of the decision? The actual motion, you know, that's always, I think, in our minutes. Okay, I see.
Anyone else?
Quick question. Chris, on like, tonight, we were just, and I can, I've looked, I've, I've gone back to our, um, meeting agendas and things like that online and minutes and everything else. But like on, for an example, and this is more about our agendas. So tonight we were handed, uh, something, like we were handed the parade. Right. At what point do those, does that get put into our agendas online too?
No, the agendas don't get amended online, but it will be reflected in the minutes that we amended the agenda.
Okay, all right.
With that.
All right, thank you.
Like the agenda was approved with the following amendment.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? So we're going to go back, so we're going to just look at your notes, that, what you suggested.
Send me what you think.
Yep. And then we'll take this up at the next meeting. And I, I personally do not think that we need, uh, another committee. I mean, this, this, we need to follow the OMA and add a few things to it and...
Okay, so we're going to discuss this again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just so that we can go back and look at, you know, what Bob gave us and...
Do we need to make a motion to postpone that until next meeting?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay. It's captured in the minutes, right?
All right.
As long as the minutes.
Moving on to new business, we have a request from the Marine City Little League. Thank you.
How's everyone doing tonight? Uh, my name is Kyle Adams. I'm the Vice President of Sopol with Marine City Little League. Uh, so I came here with a couple of requests from our board. Uh, one is we're looking to try to raise registration a little bit and would like to put up a banner, uh, similar to Richmond Little League. They put it up in the city. Uh, we're thinking either Water Street or Over Parker, somewhere where it's highly visible so we could get the word out that we're trying to get registration. With COVID, everything, we've dropped significant numbers. Uh, we're trying to get back to that pre-COVID phase. So we put out signs. Have everybody seen those in the yards? Trying to hopefully a banner will do a little bit. I do have a mock-up of the banner, pretty straightforward, simple. Just says, "Registration now open." It would be four feet by 30 feet. I did speak with Mike Edrich. Uh, it shouldn't be a problem with doing that. Um, so that is one request that we'd like to have that approval, uh, prior to purchasing it. It is a little expensive. Uh, the second one is for the T-ball field on King Road that we use as a T-ball field. There's a berm, an existing berm there that used to be used for the ice skating arena. I believe that has since moved uptown. So when we hold our Mariner Classic and also with the other, or other people that use it, the men's league and things like that, trying to expand that to a larger field versus just one age group that can play on it now, we'd like to expand that, make it a larger field to accommodate all age groups, uh, adults that play on it, travel teams that play on it. There's a lot of people that use that, uh, that the Little League takes care of. So we'd like to expand that field if possible. But we'd need to take out that berm to do so. So we would, of course, do all the heavy lifting, just need the approval, so.
Um, are you, I'm sorry, are you done?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I would suggest putting the sign, because, on Parker.
Okay.
Just because I think that Water Street gets not more non-resident traffic, even though we do use, you know, I'm on Parker Street, I, I'm sorry.
We have nothing on Parker Street. You can either ask about Broadway at Water or Broadway at Main or downtown. There are no cables coming across Parker Street.
Well, that just messes up that. How about, um, well, Broadway, because that...
Broadway at Main.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because Water Street, like I said, I think that Water Street's more people coming in to visit and you want residents.
Yes, ma'am. Very much so. Yeah, just anywhere we can put the thing, trying to drum up some more business here, so.
Yeah. Because don't we, what, don't we hang something on, we, we've hung stuff on Broadway, right, at the traffic light?
Yeah, we put our decorations up across there.
Heritage Day did...
Right.
Maritime Day.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that that's, uh, that's what I would suggest, anyway.
That, that sounds great.
When, when do you want to put this up?
Um, well, so our registration will open up here, it usually opens up mid-November. So we would like to put it up probably end of November, beginning of December, and then take it down, maybe put it back up again, January, February. I did speak with Richmond's Little League president and he said they do the same thing. They put it up in November when registration opens and then kind of adds towards registrations closing as another final push. Um, but, uh, you know, I know that, I don't want to put too much, so.
One more thing, the one thing will go up till after January first.
Okay.
Because we have a stream across there for our downtown decorations.
That, that's perfect. Any, if we can just get anything up. So, uh, I'm, I'm very open to dates and times and locations, uh, and, and anything like that to try to help out the league and, and get us some more participants, so.
And did you, did you talk about the berm?
Uh, we...
Do you want to take off the center berm?
It's where the, it's that, it would be the end berm. So it'd be the berm to the east, um, of where that rink would be. So if you're...
I'm going to have to take a look at that because I think that's part of the slope, the ditching back there.
Okay. The, when I was told it was the part of the old ice rink was the, was the reason we couldn't do it in the past. Um, yeah, because there's the berm that runs the side of the field or the first baseline between those two. It's not that one. It's the one that's out in the field. Um, it's, it was part of the ice rink, so it kept that as part of the, the, uh, water in there. Yes, sir.
Like that northwest corner where there's a little bit of bleachers?
Correct. So if you're staring out at the field, it's in left field there.
I gotcha, okay.
And like I said, for us to, to have a large enough field for juniors and seniors to play on, or even men's league, uh, you know, we need a, just a little bit bigger. Otherwise, we're hitting them into the business back there, so.
Okay, anything else?
No, ma'am.
Uh, well then, um, any discussion? I, well, I need a motion first. Um, the only thing that we're going to approve, right, because we can't do the berm, right, we're just going to do the sign.
I would take one of the berm first.
Right, yeah.
Unless you want to make it conditional on DPW approval.
Yeah.
That way you don't have to go, come back and redo it again.
Yep, good. Okay. Well, there's, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Little League's banner for Broadway and Main and that, um, pending approval from the DPW for the berm.
Support.
Any other discussion?
Just as a question, beyond us approving it, are there any other forms or other things that are required? Mike, okay. Just checking.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Parking lot lighting. Holly, you want to talk about this?
Sure. So...
First question, here, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's so...
There's no address.
I mean, as you all, I mean, learned, walking out late on Monday night, it is very dark in our parking lot. Um, it's a safety hazard at this point, no doubt. Um, I'm always scared of people backing out of the, the parking spots, reversing and having somebody standing up here you can't see. Um, so talking with Mike, right now there, the old lighting, um, it's a few hundred dollars to replace the ones that are burned out now in their current condition. If we switch to LED, which is, you all know, like I'm sure you've done in your homes, it's more expensive on the front end, but it cuts the cost in the long run and they last longer. That's what we want to do. We want to switch to LED, get the lights out there. Um, Sideline Electric, we didn't do, um, a bid process on this because Sideline pretty much does everything for us. If you look, the parts are pretty much going to be the same price anywhere, but the labor here is, he's only charging us 1,200 bucks in labor.
That's cheap.
So that's really what we thought too. So we would like to get this done now that it's dark every day when we leave.
And it's going to get darker on Sunday.
Exactly.
We should vote against that.
Getting darker on Sunday?
Fall back.
I would support that.
All right. So we need a, a motion to, uh, waive competitive bidding?
I'd like to make a motion to waive competitive bidding for Sideline Electric's proposal of lighting, LED lighting at 260 South Parker Street for a total cost of $4,680.
Support.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have to do two?
Yes.
Motion to approve the proposal.
I'll do it again, that's fine.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from Sideline Electric for LED lighting installations at 260 South Parker Street for a sum total of $4,680.
Support.
We have a motion and support. And I need a roll call on that one, too.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And moving down to, um, board vacancies. This is what we have vacant, we need. On the zoning board of appeals, we have two vacancies, uh, one board member and one alternate. On the board of review, we have two vacancies, one board member and one alternate. The historical commission, we have three vacancies. Dangerous building board of appeals, we have three vacancies. And the TFA board, um, two vacancies. Holly, do you want to talk about what we were talking about earlier, about commission members being on these boards?
Uh, sure. So, I mean, I have limited experience. I was in one other municipality, but one of the things that I had learned while I was there and did notice when I was looking at other committees and working with them in Sanlit County, um, there's often commissioners who sit on the other committees. Um, and it, it's a nice touch, they are kind of a liaison from those other committees back to the commission. It's not always just myself is the person who's the go-between or you're hoping a chair brings something back to somebody in another meeting. Um, you bring the commission's ideas and thoughts and forward thinking to the committees and vice versa. So it is a nice touch and it also gets you working with some of the other community members on different topics than just coming in and doing the commission work. Um, so I would, I would suggest that some of the commissioners maybe seek out some of the committees that interest them or they have some sort of background that they could bring a benefit to that committee and maybe look to, to get on them. I think it would be a big bonus.
Can you, um, announce that, uh, we need applications turned in by November 15th to the clerk?
And we need, uh, applications turned in by November 15th to the clerks' office.
There's applications in our office and online, if anyone'd like one.
Which is coming up, okay, all right, uh, we have a, uh, proposal from UHY, we still don't know what UHY stands for, do we?
UHY?
UHY, I want to make something up, um, for accounting services, and. Go ahead and explain.
All right, so, I apologize it didn't make it into the packet, um, their team didn't have it ready last Thursday, but I did ship it out on Monday morning soon as I got it. I asked UHY to put something together, really talking about who they are as well, because I want to be clear on what UHY is, who they are, what they represent, they're a national company, well-renowned, um, for the record, I have no affiliation with them.
Can you repeat that?
Um, yeah, I'm just throwing that out there to start with, um, but, the reason that I, I reached out to UHY originally is because, yes, our accounting department is a train wreck, and we are trying to get it back on track, um, we, Mary Ellen McDonald has, has been able to keep us afloat with payroll and paying bills going forward, but she doesn't have the time nor the commitment to go back and fix what's been screwed up, um, which is why, for instance, in here tonight, you didn't see a budget or anything other than the expenditures, because our general ledger is not correct, so, we need somebody with the expertise to come in and fix it, um, and, in working with, when I was in Lexington, Stuart Bové and Whipple was the accounting firm that we used in Port Huron, they're a municipal accounting firm, that was their forte, um, UHY was lacking a governmental entity, that's why they purchased them, so they are now an entity of UHY specializing in municipal government. I reached out to Curtis McBride to ask about his position on it, he worked with Stuart Bové Whipple's team for years, very trusted, was thrilled at the idea, to be honest with you, he knew there would be a competent team coming in to fix what was going on, and he could work with them, too, to make sure that our policies and procedures in the accounting department going forward fit with what Marine City needs. So, when I talked to them, the way that they told me that they would set it up, and that the way they'd like to set it up with us, is Mary Ellen is here through the nineteenth, that's it, she's done, she wants to be out of here, going back to being a grandma by Thanksgiving, so, UHY would like to come in and spend some time working with her to understand where we are and everything, some of the processes she had in place before she retired, so that they can try to figure out when things went south and how they, how much they need to fix, so, they want some time with her, then they would, and if you look through the packet, you'll see, they have people who specialize in all the different things, they won't pick one person and throw them in here and say, okay, you're gonna do payroll, you're gonna do accounts payable, you're gonna do accounts receivable, no, they have people who specialize in each one of those, and now, those are the people who would come in and fix that, that component, um, they can do a lot of that general ledger fixing remotely, they will send people out to have them here to deal with Mary Ellen, to get things squared away in the office, but they can do a lot of it remotely, they can't give me an estimate on how much it's gonna cost, because they don't know how bad it is until they get in there, um, then their goal would be, is once, once we're ready to have a treasurer back in this position, full-time in that office, they want to work with that person on policies and procedures going forward, make sure all the checks and balances are in place, work with McBride to make sure that he's kosher with all of the checks and balances we have in place, and go forward in a very positive way where everything is on the up and up, and we aren't gonna get in trouble anymore.
Anymore.
With our audit or anything else, so, that's where this is, and I know it's, throwing out November nineteenth when Mary Ellen is leaving is a little bit of a shock, but we knew it was gonna sneak up on us fast, UHY can mobilize immediately.
And we, and we need immediate help, we can't wait.
We can't help.
We cannot wait.
There, the, I don't have the staff who knows how to do this, as they shouldn't, it's not what they were hired to do.
Right.
We have been able to do our very best and pull together all of the pieces that we've needed to pull together to get McBride to where he is, our audit has started, thankfully, um, they are doing what they can, it's slow, but they are moving forward, which is great, and the staff has gone above and beyond to their, their typical roles, to figure things out, to find things, to do what they need to do, but they don't have the knowledge to keep it going without somebody who knows how to do this. It's, we just don't know it.
All right.
All right, did we go out for bids on this, or?
Uh, Bill, I did not, because honestly, in this area, this is who I knew, I turned to somebody who I knew had the expertise to do it, and it's somebody that McBride trusted as well, the only other company that I know that's big like this that does it, is like a plant Moran out of Detroit, but truth be told, I didn't have the time, I don't have the time on my side to go out for bid and say, you got two weeks to.
We don't?
I, I don't.
I was looking at these figures and costs, and you can go anywhere from a hundred and twenty-five dollars to three hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
Yeah, it's gonna vary on which specialist comes in to do what it's gonna, what we're gonna need to do, I mean, I can't foresee this being more than a few months, I mean, I'm thinking at a max, six months, to get us where we need to be once we have, you know, the treasurer's office, you know, full-time again, um, but I can't really give you an estimate until somebody gets in there who's an expert.
All right, so this would be seen as, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
This would be seen as a short-term.
Absolutely.
Get it fixed, in the interim, look for another finance director, and then, yeah.
Yes.
Have them train whoever that may be, and move on, okay.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, I got some questions, um, so, do you have a contract from these people?
No, this is a proposal that I asked them to put together on what their pricing structure was like, and who they were, so you could feel better about who the company was, I do not have a contract, I wanted you guys to approve using them before I signed anything to say, come in here.
Well, I always like to read contracts before I do anything, um, I guess.
With all due respect, Lisa, that's my job, if you approve the services.
We have to approve, uh, any, we have, we have to approve any contract, it's in the chart.
Okay, consider this your contract, I.
Yeah.
I don't have time to come to another meeting.
Okay, I, I still have a few other questions, I guess my concern here is, we're hiring this company, this is gonna be very expensive, and I guess I'm concerned right now at how far over-budget we are in this department, um.
I can speak to that a little bit, um, I can't give you exact figures, because I can't print the budget out and know that that is accurate at this point, but I can tell you that with the temp agency that we were paying, we were paying almost four thousand dollars a week for the temp agency, plus the treasurer's wages full-time.
Which she's still getting paid.
Right now, wait, right now, I'm paying, and I, I, what did I, I forget what, I had told you guys, we're paying Mary Ellen, but it's half of what the other person is making, and she doesn't work forty hours.
I think she's making forty dollars an hour.
So, right now, we're saving the city money compared to what had been going on for months.
But this is more expensive than what we're paying for the contract person, that was eighty dollars an hour, now we're up to a hundred and twenty-five.
At least you know you're getting, somebody knows what they're doing with this one.
I guess.
With all due respect.
Um.
It is going to be expensive, but I don't know that you have another option, you have to fix what was done.
I find it interesting that for the last couple of years, everything's been fine, and I know she's been out of the office, but I guess, what is the timeframe of using the treasurer that we have?
I can't answer that, I, I don't know.
I mean, if we had that person back, and we had another extra person to help that person, and we had proper procedures, cause we don't, um, that would help the whole situation here, but I'm concerned that this six months, at the rates that we're gonna char, get charged here, is really gonna be critical to blowing us right over the budget, something terrible.
I have no doubt that that budget will be blown, but that budget was blown because of the Robert Haft, um, arrangement, without a doubt, you, for whatever reason you guys decided to keep the treasurer at full pay, and pay a temp agency for all of those months, that's where your budget was blown, and you had, you were paying for these two people to be done, and no work was being done in your accounting department.
Yeah, I think that's the key, no work was being done.
Bills weren't getting paid.
Right.
Taxes weren't being sent out, I mean, late fees were being incurred, that's where your misstep was, I mean, your misstep is not trying to fix it at this point, to be honest with you, I know this isn't gonna be cheap, but I don't know what other alternative you have, you don't have anybody on staff right now who has the expertise to come in here and fix it, and that is including the treasurer.
But nobody, has anybody ever asked her about some of the issues and why things are, I, I, just asking.
You saw the list in the previous meeting.
Yep.
Those are standard operating procedures that should be done on a daily basis.
But she hasn't been there since June.
Why they weren't done, these go back before June, these go back into the end of twenty twenty, if they weren't done.
But all I'm asking is, has anybody ever talked to her and asked her about these?
No, she's not administrative.
So.
But if they weren't being done back into twenty twenty, why would I feel that they would be done now, any differently, I, I can't.
So you don't know how many people they're gonna send in with this?
No, it depends on what they find, I mean, the focus is going to be fixing the general ledger, we know the bills are up to date now, we've gone back into every account that we have, we've gotten everything paid up to date, um, we've paid off all of the late fees, we have, payroll is up to date, so the basic parts right now are gonna be to go in and fix your general ledger, um, like I said, some of that can be done remotely, um, I think the in-person is gonna be spent more with the procedures and the current person working on the office, that'll be a little bit more expensive than the, the remote person. This is probably the biggest function and the most important part of what this city does, we're talking about taxpayer dollars, they've been mishandled for months and months and months, we have to do something to fix this, the taxpayers deserve that, and I, I am telling you as the manager, I don't have the staff that can fix this.
Well, I just think we should be looking at other issue, I, I, I just, well, we went from an eighty dollar an hour and a forty dollar an hour, now we're up to a hundred and twenty-five, I mean, we got a, accounting associate is a hundred and twenty-five an hour, accounting senior is a hundred and fifty an hour, accounting manager is two twenty-five an hour, accounting senior manager is two thirty-five an hour, director three hundred an hour, and our practice leader is three fifty an hour, so we don't know how many of these people, that's a lot of one per hour.
And remember, but though, they, they're not forty hours a week, one specialist might do three or four or five hours worth of work that week, that might be all they need to do to come in and fix it, or, you know, it's not gonna be each of these people at forty hours a week like we've been paying people, and these are specialists, they will stand behind their work, we know that they're capable of doing what we're asking them to do.
Anyone else?
I think that this is incredibly important to go forward with, yes, it's expensive, yes, it's very expensive, but at the same time, you're never going to get any company to quote you a firm fixed price when you don't know how far down the rabbit hole you're gonna go, you don't know what's broken yet, I mean, you know, have some of it, but you don't have all of it, so, we gotta start, and we gotta start now, we cannot wait, so I mean, I'm, I'll make a motion, well, do we need to, do, um, um.
No, we could just do a motion to contract UHY for account services to get them back on track.
I'll make a motion, we contract with UHY advisors on a time and material basis to come in and correct our financial system.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I was just gonna.
We will get, uh, monthly reports from you on how much they've already, time and stuff they put in, so we know where we're going.
Absolutely, you will know what I know at, at your meetings.
Anybody else?
Yeah, not really a question, but just a comment for the public, you know, the, yes, it does sound like these are very high prices when you rattle them off one at a time, but again, each one of these is a specialist, and their time per week may only be an hour, maybe less even, required, so, uh, it does sound scary, yes, but again, this is, to a degree, the cost of doing business, and, and we do need to fix our finances, so.
Right, cause we're getting fined, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we're getting fined, that, that's eating up our cost, too, is getting fined. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, uh, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
I'm, I'm gonna qualify my vote, I'm gonna vote no, and not because I don't believe this, uh, we need to do this, but there isn't enough information here and no contract, so I can't, I can't do it without seeing the information.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes, if you keep us abreast.
I can't hear you, so down here.
Yes, if you keep him advised.
You gotta talk.
I said, yes, as, as long as you keep us abreast of what, where, where we're going in these costs.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to, uh, city manager's report.
Not a ton changed from the last one that I had submitted, um, a few more things that we've been able to start ticking off, um, different meetings, some, um, different projects, specifically, I've had a conversation with Mike, and I'm gonna give Mike the floor here in a minute, too, to follow up on, but, um, the RFP has gone out, um, as I was advised to do for the properties, um, three hundred Broadway and three oh three, um, Southwater, so that we can have that information, so that we can settle or, um, set the work di, oh my gosh, set the work group date, um, so that is out, there was, um, a dozen different commercial real estate, uh, companies that I sent the information out to, and it is posted on our website, so, for those that are interested in that, too, I know there was some comment during the public comment about what that proposal would look like, and some of the specifics of what we were asking for would be in that proposal, so if you are curious, that is where you can find it, um, other than that, there is, there's a lot of different things hanging out there, the issues in, um, our finance office, we're working on some outstanding issues regarding the bike trail, um, we have some kind of fun different things that we're looking at on the planning commission with regard to different ordinances, just Bruce up the downtown, um, I've met with the NBC on re, uh, redevelopment-ready community programs, and found out where, um, Elaine kinda left off on things and where we, where I'm gonna need to go from there, um, we're still waiting, we'll find out at the beginning of December whether or not we get the grant for the Marina, um, that's when the dean or trust fund is gonna report back, and there's a few things I haven't been able to necessarily do, um, regarding budget stuff, because I don't know my numbers, unfortunately, yet, um, but in meeting with staff, they're keeping that in mind with their expenditures and, um, things that they kinda need and want right now, keeping that in mind, um, until we can get to a better place, so, I had a great meeting with High Tech, um, on our, um, our contractors on where we stand, so, we're plugging away, um, we're plugging away on some things, so I can't complain, but I wanted to, um, turn the floor over to Mike real quick, because I know that there were some outstanding questions at the last meeting with regard to the water tower, with regard to smoke testing, um, and so, I wanted him to be able to talk to you.
Come on up, Mike. Who picked out those chairs?
These chairs aren't comfortable.
Feel free to, feel free to bring a cushion.
Okay, what I, what I gave you tonight is, this is what our annual, and our, um, inspections, that's, that's what we have done annually, and every three years, um, every ten years, our tower gets painted, and this is, this year would be the other year our tower gets painted, and, um, the last page, I gave you kind of a picture of the, the water tower itself, okay, this, this is a seven hundred and fifty thousand gallon tank, when it's fully full of water, it's six point five million pounds, and that's what that stand pipe has to move up and down with, okay, and the stand pipe we're gonna replace them with is a schedule forty steel pipe, in there right now is a schedule thirty. Back in ninety-eight, when they built this, uh, water tower, they wanted to save a few bucks, my understanding is they went to a thinner pipe, so that's why we're having problems in, with the, yeah, with the stand pipe right now, so, um, they do not cover the stand pipe in their contract with this, everything else in this, um, sphere, they cover, not stand pipe, so, and you know, they came out here, spent two days out here, put in, replaced six feet of it and patched up four holes. six feet of it, and patched up four holes for us, and didn't charge us a dime. So, but I just want to give you the, what we have done to it every year and by year. And are there any questions?
Is there a standard color that they have to paint the water towers?
It'll be, it'll be about fourteen thousand dollars more to change the color.
Really?
Yeah.
So we couldn't get it painted orange and black?
No. That'd be probably more. The darker you go, the more money it is.
Free hot water too, if it's black.
That's true.
Yep.
Timeframe approximate, how long it would take?
Well, it's going to go down for painting in the springtime.
Right, that's right.
For three weeks. So, it'll be done at that time.
And it can be done inside of that window, I guess. That's my thought.
Because they'll paint the whole tower, inside and out.
Okay.
So.
And we're staying by with East China for water?
Yes.
Right. So we won't be losing any water?
We man our plant twenty-four hours a day when this goes on. We put, we leak valves all over town. And, but if we have a structural fire or something going on, we will open up a bypass and have water from East China to help us out through the situation.
I just want everybody to know that they're going to get water anyway. We've known things.
Right.
Yeah, they'll get water anyways, so.
Okay. Anyone else for Mike?
When are you planning on doing the smoke testing?
Notices went out today. We are starting next Thursday. Okay, so the smoke testing will be starting at South Bell River, at West St. Clair, going north to city limits. I'm putting on my sign tomorrow. You know, we already put it on the webpage. Fire Department's put it on their webpage, so hopefully it gets out there. We're going to be passing out notices twice to all the homes in affected areas, so make sure they fill up all those traps, so I don't have white smoke in everybody's houses. Yeah, that's going to be the trick. They have open traps, vents. The fire department's going to be busy.
Everybody turn on your sinks for like, ten seconds each one.
Well, it's the basement traps that you need to fill in.
Oh, yeah.
Basement ones, everybody forgets about the basement traps. And you've got to get water in those traps, or else you're going to, you know, if the smoke's coming in your house, you already got the sewer smell in your house.
Right, yeah.
So.
It'll stink anyway.
Exactly. If you haven't noticed today, Union Street and South Main has a base coat on. I drove down it four times. Perfect. They'll be back next Wednesday to put the top coat on. So, oh, that's good. Plan on taking the Xeble down on Wednesday at nine AM. So, anybody want to take some last pictures of it? I'll have a crane in there to lift the top off it, haul it away.
I saw you were putting up Christmas lights. Yay.
All the Christmas lights are up. We just have to put our streamers up. So we're all ready for Santa parade.
Yep.
So, lighting the Christmas tree. And try and make everything safe at the 300 Broadway for everybody. And I think that's it, unless you guys, do you have something else?
Do you need, do you need more lights for the 300 Broadway tree?
No.
If somebody donated lights?
No. I've got two thousand lights on that thing right now.
There'll be a grizz wall over here.
Okay? I'm at my, I'm at the circuit max I can do with LEDs.
Got it.
So, so no lights. No colored lights.
No.
Takes you too long to change the bulbs out.
All right, thank you.
All set?
Thank you, thank you.
Any questions for city manager?
I have one. Are we ever going to get the financial reports? I hate to keep asking.
Are we ever going to get the financial reports?
Yeah.
As soon as our finance department is squared away. I can't print you off something that I don't believe the numbers are accurate.
There we go. Anybody else for city manager?
Just one quick question for the ongoing investigation with the existing treasurer. Do we have a notional date when it's going to be done, and we're going to get the report back?
I was under the impression it was going to be today, so I'm going to say a little prayer when we go home tomorrow, or tonight, that it's tomorrow, because this is the week that they said we would have.
Okay.
So, I mean, we are right there.
Okay.
Any minute.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to commissioner privilege. And let's start with alphabetically, Commissioner Bryson.
I just have one thing. Now that the leaves are starting to fall, please watch the drains in front of your house, the storm drains. If you see leaves on them, please, you know, unplug the drain. Don't rake your leaves into the street, blow your leaves into the street, because all that does is plug up that storm drain, and now you have standing water on the road after a high rain event, and it becomes a safety issue. So again, please, don't rake your leaves into the street. If your drain's plugged, you know, unclog it. That's it.
Commissioner Hendrick.
All right, couple of things. One thing is, I heard somebody say that the Monday's meeting was a democratic process. It was not. It really is a total violation of a person's rights and due process, and it had no rules and was not a court. It's a horribly-written old process. There is no process. Actually, no process at all. And it was not the proper way to do things, and it was a terrible thing. And I would never do that to anyone on this board and put them through that. But I also want to thank everyone for all their support. It's a hard enough job to do up here and a lot of times, but I'll tell you what, the overwhelming support from this community is always amazing. Whenever people are in trouble or need help, or we have a fire, this town rallies. Nobody has to tell them. They just see it and they do it. And they get out and they support a person. And that's what this town has always done. I remember the Where's Wally and the Bring Back Jack campaign. We've had so many. And this town supports those things when they see somebody in trouble. And that's just an amazing thing in this community. And the biggest thing I want to thank right now is Andrea here for taking on this Santa parade, because I think we all need a parade right now.
Yeah.
And just to make everyone know that it's a go. It's going to be November twenty-third, six to nine. The parade will start at seven, but it's going to be the usual. And I thank you so much for taking this on, because I'm telling you, like I said, we need a parade. We need some fun, some festivities. This is the way to go. People have been waiting so long. Even though I'm on the Lions Club and the Old News Boys, and we've been waiting for it. We had a float set up last year, and we had to take it apart because everything was canceled. But I just commend you for taking this on, and I think it's going to be a lot of fun. And I'm glad, and if anybody wants a float, we'll get ahold of Andrea there, and we'll get them in the parade, and we'll have a lot of fun with that one. The other one is the Old News Boys paper sales, which we haven't had in a couple of year, years. It's going to be Friday, December third, from seven AM to six PM. And Saturday, the fourth, December fourth, from seven to six PM. So, we're going to be on the corners. Watch out for us all. But everybody's usually very, very good about not running us over. And this town is always amazing when it comes time to collect money for the Old News Boys and Girls, for all the kids to make sure that no kid goes without a Christmas. And it's been tough the last couple of years. But I'm always happy to be involved in these organizations, the Lions Club, the Old News Boys, any of these things, because that's what this community is about. And I hope we can just get back to business and start doing the things that we were put here to do. Thank you.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes, I do have a few things. First of all, I do want to say, and I want to agree with Commissioner Hendrick's here, the last few weeks have been especially tough, but they've been, it's been tough on all of us. I can honestly say that, you know, going into this, I can't even tell you how many ti- going into Monday, I can't even tell you how many times I said that we're being put in no-win situations here. We were going to lose friends for a while, but then were they good friends after all, so does it really matter? We were going to lose business, which is a shame, if that were the case. And, and so, yeah, so we were in no-win situations. I've talked to, not going to lie, I talked to Commissioner Hendrick's a couple of times since this happened. Since this, since we knew that this was, that Monday was going to happen, I talked to Mayor Verkaman a couple of times. And I talked to a few community members. They contacted me, they emailed me, texted me, whatever. I came in here on Monday not knowing. I can honestly, honestly tell you, came in here on Monday not knowing how I was going to vote. And by the end of the night, I knew how I was going to vote. It was clear. But I want to make a couple of things very clear to everybody right now. My vote has nothing to do with how I'm going to support or not support something that our mayor has to say. And the same thing with Commissioner Hendrick. We are up here, the ten of us, and I'm going to say ten of us, because this is a team, and we are up here to do what we have to do. And we do, and I think, anybody who emailed me, in my response to you, I said, I've been elected to do what I think is best for this community. You might not always agree with it, but you elected me. And I, and I, and I think if you go back and look, I may not have gotten as many votes as Commissioner Hendrick's did, but when I won the election, I was the top vote getter. So, I don't say much. I tend to play Switzerland every now and then. And sometimes that's good, because sometimes you need that. You need that calming effect. But I don't want to go through this again. So, to my fellow commissioners, including myself, maybe we need to pay more attention to what we're doing to make sure this never happens again. Maybe we need to develop a code of ethics for ourselves. Okay, so that we have something to follow, so that we have something. I don't know, was that, but I mean, Commissioner Hendrick's claimed it was an outdated policy. You know, that never thought, never crossed my mind, until now, you know? So, and I also want to say one other thing. Commissioner Ross said, "Rain City, we got to chill." He was talking to all of us, all of us, okay? Protesters stating that they're going to protest, they're going to pick it in front of homes and things like that, and business, "Come on, guys, we got to stop." He wasn't just talking to our mayor. He wasn't. All right? This is a small town. You know, I don't expect us to be Hallmark, okay? Because that's not real. We're not Hallmark movies. Okay? But I don't expect us to be Hatfield and McCoy's either. So, that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Clausen.
Well, I'm glad to say that Riverside Theater is going to be open tomorrow. Brand-new seats, rocking chairs, a lot of room. They set it up where, because they invited me in, set it up where there's no blind spots for you. He moved the chairs around, big aisle spaces. He wants to stay here. He's been here for years. And I remember when I once ran that theater, and it's, I've seen nights when all theaters, all the theaters were sold out. So, let's support our theaters. It's movie, we have different kinds of theaters. We have the ones uptown, and we have the one at the mall, which is a movie theater, so. And I want to say that I agree with Wendy on, we have to step it up. And I made my decision here after hearing everything, so. Didn't come here with a fixed decision. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Well, I'd like to thank you, Joe, especially today, for your kind words and your calm, you know, assessment. I'm thankful that I have the ability to vote how I feel I think the issue should be voted on. And I felt, unfortunately, a little bit threatened, especially on social media and some other places, because of my decision, which I think is all of our freedom to assess and make our own decision. And I don't have to agree with everything that every other one of these people thinks. That's why we're all here. And we're also, I feel like when we were told, you know, that this is our town, I live here, it's my town, I love this town. That's why I moved here. I think, I think we have a good opportunity to be the kind of place that a lot of people want to move to. And I hope that our commission can get past the, you know, it's difficult. Politics is not fun. I've found that out. It's more fun to watch. But I, I think we, as a commission, and the city manager, and everyone in this city, has great attitudes, and I've, I believe we can do something great and turn this city into a place where our children are going to maybe stay here. Maybe we have a place that's so cool that people want to come here. And maybe we make that such a nice place for the people that live here that we're the lucky ones that got in early, okay? And we'll talk about how to get the traffic out of here as well. I have my bike here, so. But thank you very much, and I hope we can all move forward. And I appreciate everyone here. Thank you.
Commissioner Ross.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate that the movie theater will be opening, and I'm going to go with some friends to see the new James Bond movie. Big fan, hoping that that's a good one. And-
Not good.
No? Don't disappoint me early.
Spoiler alert.
Anyway. Yeah. Again, yes, the city needs to get together. You know, we need to listen to both sides. That's what we're here to do. I can guarantee that every person sitting behind this table, any of them, if any of us called each other and had a problem, we would have each other's backs. And that's what the city needs to do, okay? Very divisive. I had as many people saying that, you know, Lisa should stay as Lisa should go. And it's obvious, that's kind of a problem. Under the same auspices, you know, we need to give each other the benefit of the doubt. I gave a member the benefit of the doubt. I think that that's a good lesson to teach and a good lesson to learn. And again, treat your neighbor as yourself. It's the golden rule for a reason. Look at the other side and ask yourself why this might be happening. We're not all evil people. We're not out to get people, okay? We're, again, every person sitting behind this table absolutely loves this city more than anything. And you've got to understand that. We're not boogeymen. We're not out to get people. We're just trying to do what we feel is the best for our city. That's all.
And I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.